I'm just gonna X out of here. Okay, good afternoon, everybody. I am so glad you're here. My name is Paula Call. I call it Paula with the short vowels because I work as someone in Paula, so we need to make sure that we can differentiate each other. This is the study session that we host every year that we have an election, which is every two years. The roles are staggered so that at any given point, there's always at least three board members who are going to provide continuity to the role should we have three new friends join us after the election in November. So I'm going to go through a presentation that has a lot of the, I don't wanna call them technicalities, but a lot of the things that I am supposed to tell you today. And then we will have room for questions. And then at that point, all of us will be happy to answer either all of your questions or specific questions that you may have for individual folks. Sounds good? Thank you so much. All right, let's dig in. So the first question is, I'm guessing you are here because you are either considering to run for yourself, either now or later. Perhaps you know someone who you might want to get some talking points for as you try to persuade them to run. The first question is really, after you, as you consider, should I run? The best question is, why do you want to run? And the reason that that comes about is because this is public service, so it's not something that is about publicity. It's not gonna get you best friends, probably actually not friends. But if you are someone who is concerned about the students, if you are happy to be here and just really look into all of the things that are related to school boards, beyond, you know, there's financing, there's protecting taxpayers' money, but most important are the students, of course. So, do you value collective action? It's a really good question because unlike other legislative bodies in our state, this is a position where while elected, there's no power of one here because we work together as a board. We need a quorum of four out of six. I don't have the ability here to propose, I can say, I wanna talk about this policy or we should change this policy and let's talk about it. And you will hear that every meeting, if you're watching or coming over, that we do have space at the end. But individually, you don't have power, but collective power is here if you are someone who is willing to work in that way. And then finally, do you enjoy governance and policy work? And that's a good question because when you're a school board member, you don't really work administering the school district. You are in the business of hiding people who know how to do that, and that's the superintendent and supporting with the staff. So we don't really manage. Our role is to govern. And what that means, it has to do a lot with the policies, both set by the statute but also the policies that we have in our guidelines and in posted, you know, in the website. The policies that guide really every single piece of the things that we do. But most important, what I appreciate more about being here is because board members set the vision and the direction where the districts, our school district is going. For eligibility requirements, you have to be at least 21 years old. You have to be an eligible voter. You should be a resident of Richfield for at least 30 days prior to the election. Or the appointment, should this be an occasion where there's appointed outside of an election because of a vacancy, which hasn't happened in six years, but it might. You cannot be convicted of a felony. And if there, and there may be conflicts of interest if you are a district employee or perhaps your family member. So if you, if you, your spouse, maybe someone real, the spouse, that's why we have that form.
No, we've had a spouse. We've had a spouse of a district staff member. Deb Etchen was on the board and her husband was.
Oh, it was it? Oh, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, the contract is mainly if you have like a business that does.
Oh, like benefit from bits?
If you're one of our contractors who supplies us whatever, paper.
Appreciate that correction. Because we just, I just saw that form. It's like, every year, we have to say where we work and where our spouses work. And the reason is because every contract that we do has a bidding process, and we are the ones who approve the bid. So when I make sure that if my spouse is in construction business, we're not giving that. You know, it's all about transparency and making sure that everything's sold good. Filing to become a candidate. The filing period begins July 27th, so that's in two weeks. And it stays open until August 10th at 5:00 in the afternoon. If you file and then for some reason, and I hope you don't, change your mind and decide not to run, then you need, you have two days to go back and withdraw. Otherwise, your name is gonna be on the ballot, whether you want it or not. You have to file an affidavit, which is going to, is available at the website. I'm pretty sure we're gonna have hard copies here, Cassandra, right? Because sometimes. And then you will go, you will go visit our wonderful Cassandra, who will take, she was, her role in that regard is to be the clerk. And the filing fee is $2. And your form has to be filled fully and it has to be accurate. Campaign financial reporting. So the state statute dictates that if you receive or spend over $750 during your campaign, you have to make a report, a campaign finance report, 14 days after that event happened. However, if you don't have any expenses of that nature, you wouldn't have to do that. But all candidates, regardless from how much money they spent or didn't, have to file a certification seven days after the election. And all of those informations and form can be found at a linked website. You can, we'll figure out a way to get it to you. Maybe mail it if you need the link, but it's pretty easy to obtain. So, the power of the school board, as granted by our Minnesota law, is that you are in charge of the care, the management and control of school district affairs. The school board is charged with the care management and control. And those are a lot of legality things I'm not going to go through. But the board must, has a general business of the things that happen here. So things related to budgets, anything that needs to be signed, any contracts that need to be awarded, and obviously, the budget. We sign personnel matters. We definitely, I think the biggest thing that we do here is, we're always revising the policies and make sure that they're on a cycle, make sure they still reflect the community, the needs for our students. We manage, we hire, evaluate the superintendent. So, and we also have something, and you probably heard this a lot, the famous referendums that you hear about when there's an election. Like, that's our job to come up with a lot of that because we are the ones, obviously, the management is, you know, they really keep track of those things. But when there's a need to increase something like that, that is a board decision to do it or not. And we do have some committees within that, by citizens, who advise about finance, sometimes about curriculum and other things. There was something about bonds there that I missed.
Selling, so issuing bonds.
Yeah.
That would be part of our, these shares.
Yes. And he's the number person, so if you wanna.
So, for example, we, you know, the construction project, we took out a huge amount of debt, you know, that we, by issuing bonds into the investment market and whoever, investors buy them. We have to authorize that level of debt.
Yeah. Thank you very much. There's some responsibilities. There's attending, there's required training. It's really only like two days of that. There's other two days that are voluntary. We all do it because we are, well, I'm very competitive. I won in my certificate, but.
It's also super informative.
It's very informative, yeah. Now, the first two were, I'm talking about the optional ones, that I went and got them. And they were really helpful. But really, the first two, I found them to be so valuable because that's really where I understood the first, and I wish I had known that before because I didn't come to this session when I ran, which I should have, but I didn't have. That, the power of one, right? There's no power of one. And also, open meeting law. So at no point, at no time, four of us can be in a place that's not openly available to the public talking about board issues and board business because that's against the law. And that's something that we take very, very seriously, as we should. So part of the things we do, while we are not really administering the district, we do keep track of all of the data. We request a lot of it. We analyze it about academic achievement, of course, about business culture, I mean, business building culture, and policies out there. We are obviously available to speak to the community and about any questions or concerns that occur and connecting community members with the right person who might be able to answer something if we don't know that. We also, while we are not in the negotiating room of bargaining contracts, we are the ultimate approvers for the district. So throughout the negotiating of those, we set guidance about pay raises or percentages or, you know, benefits or things that we are being asked to do. And we give the district administrators guidance about that. But it's really guidance. And then at the end, we are the ones who sign the contract that the employees had agreed to sign. And we also collaborate with community partners. And we have, including the city, including other community groups. And we try to be out there. We try to take turns and hear out from the, from, you know, all six of us to stay in touch and then to come here and report during our meetings. So, when elected, these are the expectations. We meet twice a month. And we have a meeting one time in July. You will receive the board packet draft earlier in the week before and the official draft the Friday before the meeting. And that's the same day that we get published. We put it online, right? For residents and anyone to review. Four of us, in either rotation, voluntary manner, we fill all the roles such as, we have a chair, a vice chair, treasurer and clerk? Yeah, I was gonna say secretary, but that didn't sound right. And then so, in each one of those roles, so for example, the chair has a lot of responsibilities because when, because when someone writes and they write to all of us, because we cannot even email each other in like reply all because that's against the law as well, we have a procedure where he's the only one who replies. And that way, we avoid that we are replying to all. He also has, for now, because you, I don't know, for now, you're the chair now, so yeah.
I'm the chair now, yes.
You have a lot of responsibilities also that are above and beyond. And we rotate those positions too, throughout the time, every year during our first meeting of the calendar year. And let's see. We also have liaison positions. And those are the community links that we have. We have links with community education. I'm going to forget a lot of them. It's a long table, but I'm gonna try. We have links with community education. We have city council. We have the planning, oh my God, FPAC Finance. Fiscal Planning Committee, thank you. There's a committee for curriculum. There's another one for the calendar. There's another, there's a, there's a lot of. And then we serve as the, the human rights and also. And what we do, like I said earlier, is that we go there. We communicate. We bring things back here or we take things over there. We answer questions that they might have about, you know, future plans and where things are going. And we participate in issues and community work as needed. So, here's with the law. These are the slides I don't like. I already told you about open meeting law, yay me. We really have restrictions under what circumstances? A quorum of the board can be meeting outside the public eye. There is one instance that I know happens here a lot. And it's those bargaining contract negotiations happen during closed session, but they're recorded and available to the public for release after the negotiations are over. So while it is closed session in the moment, it's not going to be a, it's not a closed session for, for the entire, you know, it's not forever. And we have to maintain privacy or confidentiality of certain types of data. So, as you know, there's a lot of, as you think about hospitals and like, you know, HIPAA. And then here, we have a lot of employees that we need to also protect. And we have, more importantly, students' data that we have to protect and records. So, that's, I would say, yeah, that wasn't as boring as I thought it was gonna be. Okay. Okay, and then code of ethics. These are all in Policy 202. They pertain to the school board. There's a manual. You can find them on the website. After today, if you go and look at that and you have any follow-up questions, any one of us will be happy to, you know, walk you through that. Any questions that you might have, if necessary. I just noticed two left-handed people here. I'm left-handed, yay us. I will say, in case you're wondering with the jokes, I was a first grade teacher. So, you need to survive when you're teaching that age. And fun is part of it. Okay, so what can you do to be ready to join the school board? It's very, it's a good idea to schedule perhaps a meeting with the superintendent, with the board chair or any one of us. If you have any questions from campaigning to community to what does the job really look like? You know, what does it feel like? Do you regret it? I do not. Really, anything that you, you know, come into a meeting, if you haven't already, to see the, you know, to see, that I did do, to check the flow of the meeting. And any, something very useful is that we do archive online all of the agenda packets from the, from the past. We have a YouTube channel where you can find all the videos from previous meetings. And so if you are not able to be here, you can access those from your home as well. The Minnesota School Boards Association, MSBA, is the organization that the state has for all school boards from really every school district out here. It is a nonprofit voluntary organization. And they are really, they are, they really do the most professional development for school boards. So those four courses that, you know, trainings that I spoke about earlier, they're the ones who host them and who deliver that instruction. They also support board members with any questions that we might have. Let's say there's a policy that we don't have in our district, but we would like to have it. They most likely have templates of it that you can start building from that already incorporate a lot of the legalities of, so you don't have to start from scratch. And there's something that I do with them at the end of the year. And it's the, okay, I've been here five times. What's the name of it? There's the delegate assembly. And the delegate assembly is really great because it's a really grassroots weekend where all the school board districts send someone or from, it doesn't have to be like every single one, obviously, but there's areas too. But the good thing is that you can bring motions of things that you would like the MSBA to focus on for the legislative session that will begin, I mean, for the state's session that begins in January through February. So basically, they, you can bring motions. You hear the people's motions. You debate them. You have to, you know, there's a microphone. You say, oh, that's a horrible idea. Or like, that would be really bad for my district. Or yeah, it would be great for my district. And then we vote on those. And then that's what the board will do and bring to the legislators on our behalf, on our collective behalf. And so it's really exciting to see that kind of connection with the, you know, school board meeting of the people. That is by election. So someone has to nominate you or you self-nominate. And then if you are chosen, then you participate in that. There's a lot of resources here in these links. And this is the fun part, questions.
Could we quickly just go back to that last slide?
Yes.
Would like to take a picture of that.
Of course.
We could send it to you also.
Would we help to do some introductions?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So we can start by introducing ourselves at least to make sense of who you are. You're introducing yourself, well, especially staff.
Microphone, please.
See, study session, more casual. I forgot about the mic, sorry.
I did as well.
My name is Crystal Brackey. I am in my sixth year on the board. So I'm in the middle of my second term.
My name's Peter Tensing. I was first elected to the board in 2007. Then I lost an election in 2011. So if you want to talk about how to lose, I'd be happy to help you with that. And then I, then I got, figured it out and came back in 2013.
My name's Allegra Smieszek. This is my first term. I was elected in 2019. It's been an interesting ride so far, but it's great to be back in person without masks on. And so if you have questions about a new board member or sort of that transition into the role, I'd be happy to talk about that.
And you know me, but I did, I was re-elected to my second term in 2019. So I'm also halfway through my second term.
Steve Janowski, Superintendent of Richfield Public Schools. I was hired seven years ago. Superintendents go on three-year contracts. This is the end of year, or the start of year two of my third contract in Richfield Public Schools. We've seen one strategic plan through to the beginning of a second strategic plan.
I'm Christine Malik. I am in, I'm in my eighth year. So coming up on the end of my second term. I've served as chair for two years. That was a great experience. And I would add too that this is just a really great group of people to work with. I feel like we have just a great respect for a diversity of opinions. We don't all always agree, but we are respectful with each other and listen carefully to each other's opinions. And I think that's an important thing to bring as a member of any school board, so. And I am open to answering questions or meeting with anybody at, at request.
Hello, I'm Tim Paulus. This is also my eighth year. Christine, Peter and I got elected for the first, well, Pete's second phase eight years ago. I get to serve as the chair this year, which is a great experience. We have, you know, there are some boards where the chair sort of persists in that role for a while. Our board's custom has been to sort of pass it around every two years. And the vice chair has served in a role so that they're ready to perhaps move up. It's not written down. It's just been a custom. That way, we, we share the responsibility and we share the honor. And I'd also be happy to meet with anyone and talk about things. Yeah, anything you need.
Cassandra?
I don't have a microphone. I'm Cassandra. I, I'm not a member of the school board, but I serve as the secretary. So I'm taking the notes and doing the presentations for you.
And is the person you will file the paperwork with, as shared before? Staff in the room introduce themselves next. Why don't we do that?
I'm Curtis Clarkson. I'm the executive director of special programs. So I have the honor of supporting all of our support services in the district of special life, charitable health, and program and other support services. Can I have been in the district? This will be held in the 590.
I'm Kurt Goldie. I served in the district in 1992 as a teacher at Richfield Junior High. Was up in another district for about five years and then came back as HR director in.
Came back as HR director in 2005. And then in 2015, took over the business side of the organization, which includes human resources, finance, facilities, transportation, nutrition services, marketing and communications. And I think that's it, so.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Latonya Daniels. I'm the Assistant Superintendent in Richfield currently. I am also the past high school principal. I was the principal for five years at Richfield High School. And I'm just completing my first year as Assistant Superintendent. Nice to see you.
Maybe if you have questions, you just introduce yourself, if that's okay, before you ask your question. And we have the mic now so that people who are maybe watching this later can also hear.
Bonjour. My name is Rachel Banks-Cupcho. I, I'm wondering about like what, and you don't all have to answer these questions, but what has been the best part of being on the board or the most rewarding? And what has been the biggest challenge?
Should we work this way? Crystal, you're up.
Well, and I'm mindful of what you said, that we don't all have to answer everything. Otherwise, we're not even gonna have time for other questions.
Right.
So I will start with the best. How about that? Which is actually seeing meaningful change in student outcomes and being able to point to decisions that were made by leaders in this room, supported by us as a board that I think contributed to that and are continuing to tribute to that and that we are continuing to push based on what we are learning works. And also, what we see doesn't work because I think failures are really important of our process, too.
So I would say that the best part of the experience is really the ability to just sort of observe the successes of our students and to, to have that opportunity to see some young people who are really flying. And that, that to me is just very personally gratifying to know that, that these kids are, you know, getting ready to launch and doing so well. I, I think that it's fair to say that one of the things that I think is important to sort of think about for yourself is knowing that there's, there's really no way in this position that everybody is gonna be happy all the time. And so there's, you know, it's almost inevitable that at some point in time, you will be asked to make a decision that's going to make somebody mad. And so I think it's really a good idea to spend some time thinking about what are. And so I think it's really a good idea to spend some time thinking about what are your values, getting really clear on your value system and, and knowing that, that you're able to, you know, feel okay about the fact that somebody just might be mad at you. And so I think that's an important thing to kind of be thinking about and be aware of. And the ability to, I think that the ability to really be strong on your values and be able to articulate that clearly is, I think, a really important part of being a good board member. One thing that I super appreciate about this body and this group of people has been that what's always been really clear is that the chief value for all of us is to see our students succeed. And so putting the success of the kids first has, has really been, I think, the unifying force among this board. That's been, I think, a rock for me in times that have been stressful. Yep.
You said, you have, I have a question or?
No, those were, those were my questions. I was just kind of, I turned it off, so.
Okay, my name is Catherine Eccleberry. And actually, my question was very similar. What are, have you accomplished that you're really proud of? But you kind of answered that, but did any of you have any other things you'd want to add to that?
I would, I would add, you know, eight years ago, when Pete and Tim and I were elected, we had a lot of ideas and concerns maybe about where things were at. And I think implementing a consistent strategic plan and using that to guide our decisions so that you're not, you know, there was no strategic plan, they were using like a quality assurance program, which is great, but not necessarily as effective in running a school district. So I think implement having that strategic plan, getting all of the community feedback for that and completing everything in that plan and doing the next five year, I think that was a huge accomplishment for the board. And I think coming on eight years ago to see how far the district has come in working forward on that and really engaging the community and student voice. And we did the, not
Reimagine Richfield.
Reimagine Richfield, where it basically was bringing it to the students and making our strategic plan based on things that they felt were important. So really being able to listen and hear what students wanted and to be able to make that difference for them afterwards and give that feedback to them. I mean, Latonya was a big part of that and giving, doing all the, a lot of the things they asked for and then going, here's the changes we've made. And these changes were made based on what, what you wanted as students. And these are things that you've helped us improve for the classes to come. I feel like that was huge for, for me to see all of those changes and to have that student voice just become a, a natural part of what we do. We have student board members that during the school year participate and provide a lot of information for us and insight into kind of what we're doing. And they were really important this past year when students weren't in the building all of the time to have that perception and opinion of students right here with us in the room as we're making decisions, I think, was really helpful.
Can I ask one more question? Kind of about that. So who decides exactly what you deal with? The students bring up stuff, but do you guys get to bring something up that concerns you? Do you know ahead of time what you're going to be talking about? Do you get a chance to prepare or educate yourself or that sort of thing?
I'll jump in, I've been muted. I do want to say, you know, all of the things Christine said and everyone else has said about our improvements are exactly right. But the truth is, we got lucky with the one most important thing we do, which is hire a superintendent. And so we brought in Steve and he channeled all of our fragments of ill-informed ideas of what we wanted into actually actionable things with the team he's built and everything else. So that's been really the best thing we've done. And his willingness to run with those ideas and the team he's built have framed out the stuff that we, you know, I, I do spreadsheets for a living, like that's, you know, I'm not an educator, so I'm, I'm pretty fortunate to have someone who can translate my half-baked ideas. In terms of, you, you've asked about agenda items. At the end of every meeting, we have, you know, hey, are there any other things, like just sort of this open call, just questions from the board? You know, are there any future agenda items you'd like to hear, you know, hear discussed? And you can bring up anything you want. Usually, usually it's policy-related things like that. But, so that's an idea you can talk about and say, you know, and perhaps it's handled, the administration might have a meeting with you, you could meet with Steve or whoever he delegates to, to say, hey, maybe you need to talk to Craig or Latonya to get up to speed on that. And then we can talk about it later if it's not quite a board discussion thing. But in terms of the packet itself, the packet has a lot of educational content. And again, I didn't work as an educator necessarily, and so I had a lot to learn in my first few years. I would read, you know, it's, the first weekend can be busy, you know, and, and as you get your legs under you for learning how this operates, the administration is your sounding board or another board member to ask questions of them. Like everyone on the team would be willing to answer your questions about like, what the heck does this mean? What are we trying to do on a current agenda item? And you don't have to agree with them, but they can give you the background on it, but the administration will also fill you in as well. I mean, it's, it's Steve's role to inform us of what some of this means.
Because you get a chance to, do they bring something up? And then do you guys get to go home and really sort of study it for yourself? Or do you just have to take their word?
Oh, no, 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 we can.
No, you definitely have the opportunity to look things up and study it yourself. Because you, we get a draft board packet the Wednesday before the meeting. And also, like, it's not like something typically brand new pops up that we are uninformed about. If we're going to do something big or we're going to talk about things, we usually get the heads up from Steve in advance. Hey, you should start thinking about this, this is something we're going to be talking about. Or he'll ask our opinion about, he'll just speak to individual board members to kind of get a feel for where we're at on something before it's, before it's brought up.
And I would just say, there are things that we spend multiple meetings on, sometimes over many months, because it is that level of importance and detail. So the equity policy that we just passed as a school board is a really good example. I think we spent about eight months working on that and talked about it in three or four, maybe more different board meetings. And then there were all sorts of meetings that happened in between the board meetings with us, with students, with some of these committees. So there, there are things that actually go through many, many rounds of input and process before we as a board even make the decision on it.
Right. For an outsider, right, like we, you might, if you watch us, seemingly everything passes six, nothing. But that's not because we all agreed, you know, that we didn't see it for the first time that, that time. And big things take time and you have plenty of time to study and learn about them and get comfortable with it. And, and affect change on them. If you don't like how it's worded, you can, you bring it up here and talk and work with the administration to have it sculpted the way you think it should be. So by the time it does actually come up for a vote, it's roundly supported. But there's a lot of work that goes on all publicly, of course, or privately, if you're researching on your own and having conversations with Steve.
Can you have the mic?
Hi, my name is Ginny. One procedural question. So superintendent, you're not actually elected, correct? You just sit on the board.
I sit here and I don't vote. I'm hired on a three-year contract.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because like, as I was going through and, you know, my six-year term, my four-year term. But, okay, are we, were we elected our superintendent?
Just started, right. So I'm not elected, I'm hired and then receive, negotiate a three-year contract.
Okay.
I am in just the beginning of year two of my, of my third year contract. So I have a year and eleven and a half months at this point under contract for Richfield.
Okay, I just want, because I'm in no way qualified to be the superintendent, so I didn't want that to be one of the positions that I was looking at. But I digress. So I was super excited to see that there is this commitment to transparency. But I have to say, the website is super hard to find any information, which really flies in the face of the whole, we want to be transparent. Like it doesn't list when people's terms are up, you know, all this stuff could be on there that would be so much, I don't know, such an easy way to educate the people that you serve? I mean, I don't know, maybe I wouldn't have attended, I'd have read it online or whatever, I don't know. But, but I will say that that was, that was a really frustrating part of even looking into this and even finding when people are running, I mean.
That makes total sense. So just to respond to that, so here's how some of the things work in a board meeting, right? So you just mentioned something, administration heard it, Jennifer Valley, our communications person, who's actually texting me at the moment, is actually listening to us and listening to me as we speak.
And Cassandra is also typing.
Cassandra, yes. Cassandra is taking notes. So this is the first election since we actually transferred over to a new technology system about a year and a half ago in July. And so we were unaware of what is missing and so we're able to take your feedback. I would assume in the near future, probably at some point this week, some things will get updated. And once we hear those things, as administration, we typically respond pretty quickly. So I appreciate you giving us that.
Yeah.
Yes, you did. But it is, I'm, I'm just saying that is, it's a great example of, that's exactly how a lot of the, the things that, that we aren't doing in the way we would want to do. Once somebody tells us, we do the best we can to adjust. So we appreciate that. So while you're passing that, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the things that excite me, because I'm a very data-driven person. And I do want to talk about some of the exciting things that are connected to the board and the board members have pushed for. When I entered, we were one of the least financially sound districts in the state of Minnesota. We had a two and a half percent fund balance and it was suggested that we must get more effective. We are now very financially sound, we have passed for referendum questions. And then in addition, we have also updated our buildings, some with $123 million update. That was something that was asked for broadly by the community, but hadn't happened in over 20, 25 years. Went with one of the least diverse leadership teams in the state of Minnesota to the most diverse. We went to 4% in terms of teacher diversity to 12% and we are now one of the most diverse teacher teams in the state of Minnesota. Even though 12% is atrocious, that, that is where we have gone.
And it's less than six in the state.
Yes, correct.
So we are twice as diverse as the whole state.
Right. We were just outlined on Care 11 for having the largest jump in high school graduation rate this last year, perhaps in the state of Minnesota. And we've gone up 16 points in my time, including closing 33-point gap between white students and students of color. And we are one of the only districts in the state of Minnesota without an outcome graduation gap for student, white students compared to students of color. Our ACT scores have gone up, our MCA scores have gone up pretty much, well, we have served millions of meals to the community in a widely expanding nutrition services department and in most measurables, we are doing extremely well. And then I would say the biggest challenge is that it's nowhere near enough. And one of the things that drives our team is, is that we aren't getting everything done and we will keep fiercely fighting until we get there.
Something I appreciate from leadership here too is when you're in education, you see a lot of districts and leaders, they make decisions and when they don't work in two years, they drop them and say, well, it didn't work. But here, we, we started off with like, with the strategic plan and said, this is what we're going to do and we followed through. And something in addition to, like, we increased the number of students of color taking honor courses and college credit courses because we figure, well, that was not we, that was Ms. Daniels and Steve and the team, but that they need to be prepared to get there. And they needed that because if you only leave it to, do they have the credits they need, but you don't make help and get the credits they need, it will never happen. And it did happen. We also took a, you know, every, any kid can do it, right? They, they don't need to be recommended by a teacher, so it's open to, so it's just those things that, and I really wanted to answer your question about things that you're proud of, but I didn't do it because I was trying to go for like equity of voice, so I'm just like here, ah. But yeah, that's very like, wow, like you just look back and it just, it, it works and it's improving lives. And yes, we have more work to do, but the progress has been very, very impressive.
I think that there's one point that I wanted to make, which is, one, just a piece of advice, unsolicited advice, isn't that wonderful? But at any rate, I, I
It's an info session.
Yeah, the fact that, the fact that the strategic, I, I would recommend getting a, getting yourself familiar with a strategic plan, because I think that's a really great sort of summarizing document that would say, what is the direction and the vision that the district has set for itself? And you may or may not agree with everything in that strategic plan, but I think it would be a good way to frame up your own vision for what you think this district needs to be doing. And it might be aligned very well with our strategic plan, but I think, I think that would be a good starting point for a candidate to educate themselves.
And I'll say as a new person, I really anticipated some pat, pats on the head from my colleagues who I didn't know very well. But that has never been the case. Like I was taken seriously from day one and
I was about to be real nervous, so you said you did feel like we were
I just expected that and then I never got one.
How about a pat on the back? Is that less
I've gotten some pats on the back, yeah.
There was a pandemic, we couldn't do it.
Fair enough. And when, occasionally, my background is in education, so I, if anything, have a tendency to like want to micromanage and not completely understand the governance piece. And when I am in that space, my colleagues are really good about saying like, oh, that's not really governance, but like, this policy could address the issue that you're like, so let's look at this policy. So I've just found that really helpful and I think it, it speaks to the respect we have for each other and any future members. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just, I'm kind of rounding my question, actually. I'm Eric Carter. So Peter, you made a comment earlier just about decisions that may not be popular, right? And, and something that just keeps going through my head is that there's, at least since I actually sat here two years ago and listened in, and there's been a number of those unpopular decisions. For me, one of my concerns is, is like, how much do you guys feel that you're able to talk about it? Because I mean, I, for me, I feel like sometimes, and I love, see what you just said, kind of like all the good statistics of the things that the school district has done, but for me, it's like, it's a little bit of a publicity, not publicity stump, but like, you know, it's like you make an unpopular decision, but then people wonder why. And it's like, how much do you have to be closed loop versus how much can you explain to people, here's why we made that decision?
Good question. So it, a lot of that has to do with what we are legally allowed to say to the public. So for a lot of things, we can share our, our perception of why we went a certain way or made a decision. But a lot, not necessarily a lot, but certain things we are, that are related to say, a staff member or a, or student information, we aren't allowed to publicly speak of because it's the Data Privacy Act where it's, we have to maintain that privacy for an employee. So that's typically the times when we cannot say anything. And that is, I would say, one of the hardest parts of the job. Some, sometimes that is a really tough thing, to not be able to explain the details of why you've made a decision.
I think, I'm sorry to
And just one other thing, and when, when we make a decision, if, even if, say, I'm the one person that votes no, and that has happened, once the decision is made by the board, then it's my responsibility to back the decision of the board. Maybe I didn't agree with it, but this is, it's not, it's not just me, it is a board decision. So it's important to remember that, you know, once that, once decisions are made, then it's, it's the members' responsibility to support that decision of the board as a whole.
What I was going to say is, right, there, there are the constraints of data privacy, you know, which we obviously need to take very seriously. And that really, really, I think that's just going to relate to data that relates to an individual staff member or an individual student. If we're talking about policy, if we're talking about values, if we're talking about strategic direction, you can say whatever is on your mind, and you should. And I think that's, that would be the environment that, you know, that we really do try to promote.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And I, I think one of the things that is hard is, we do disagree in public in board meetings, but the problem is so few people are watching them or ever know that or hear about it. And I don't think we do a good job of actually sharing some of those more rigorous discussions and disagreements that do sometimes happen here in board meetings. I will also say, Steve and I disagree real hard in private, like, real hard sometimes.
That's why she's sitting there.
No, it's not. But I, I think that's also part of it, is like knowing that the relationship that exists between individual board members and the superintendent can be rooted in the trust that you can disagree hard in private and know that that's going to result in better things in public when it comes to having the discussions, when it comes to making the decisions. And no, people don't see or know the things that Steve and I disagree hard. And no, people don't see or know the things that Steve and I disagree hard about in private, but I do. And I feel like it is my responsibility as a board member, and it's my responsibility to him as the superintendent, to do that work.
And that, those discussions are how we grow as board members and for Steve as a superintendent, is really talking about what we maybe don't agree about. And I have always thought that's one of the most valuable things about this group of people is how many things we have diverging opinions on, yet we, I learn from all of these people all the time. And talking to someone one-on-one or having a discussion in a board meeting, it's a, it's a great learning process. And I know when Crystal, I would say, when Crystal was the vice chair and I was the chair, that was a great couple of years of working as a team, but really, I learned a lot of things from Crystal's perspective that I didn't see on my own, and so I really appreciated that as a chair.
You and I are having a great time.
Right, but no one learns from me.
I disagree, but.
There was something that Peter said earlier about, are you, are you ready to, like, what happens when the decisions are made and they're not popular, right? And the thought that came to mind is this, is not, am I ready to, that, for me, that people are upset, am I ready to be able to say to them later, I am still convinced I made the right decision at the time, even though you may not be able to understand it? And it became, it comes to me about integrity. I can tell you, and I speak for myself, it would be so much easier if I came here to do what the community wants us to do or me to do, because I would be very popular. I would be the one saving the game, but that's not the right thing to do. So it's those, like, are you okay with making that hard decision? And there are things that happen here that actually tell me, like, sometimes, like friends versus foe, is that the people who say, this looks really bad, but I know you and I trust you, versus like, you are horrible. And, and it's fine. I mean, everyone can have their opinions, but that is, that is, it's a reality, but it's not something that happens all the time either. So it's not like I have to think about that every single day for the last six years either. But that is really, it's not like, can I take the hit from the people? It's can I still be okay with my decision after the people come at me? And we have a lot of work to do, and a lot of things happen at schools that we don't know about, but we want to know about them because once we are aware, we can address them. And also, there's learnings, even in, after unpopular decisions, there are learnings that we go back and say, what could have we done differently? And what kind of systems and what kind of culture do we need to establish in this building or the other building or the district as a whole? So everything is also a learning opportunity.
For me, sitting back, that's one of the hardest things from watching a board member is, you'll have the information that the public doesn't have, and you don't get to tell them as they say to you whatever they want to say and however they want to say it. And that's really, really a hard place to be. And so that, watching that challenge with board members, working together and reviewing everything is a really hard place, and it's something people should take seriously if they choose to run for a board because it's not always a popular chair to sit in.
But we do, we do support each other as a team through some of that stuff. So it's, you're not out there on your own. I mean, because we're all dealing with it.
Yes.
We support each other.
We cannot talk about.
Can you hear me?
Talk to you.
A friend of mine said that a lady he knew who was running for the school board, she was threatened, she received death threats, this was over in Minnetonka, and her, her house or property was vandalized. I'm wondering if that's ever happened here?
To my knowledge, no.
It was on the news, he said. I never saw it, I, but.
There have been really uncomfortable moments. I have never felt threatened, is how I would answer that.
I would agree.
Been called names.
Yeah.
Yep.
Told things you didn't believe about yourself, you know, like, okay.
Yep.
Or you're in front of your family or whatever, right? So that's never easy. You're like, all right. You know, I mean, like, my family watches our meetings. Our recent meetings have not been smoothly operating, right? And so my family watches them and says, what the heck was going on? I'm like, it's fine.
And, I mean, we've had a couple of really difficult meetings. I mean, so for me, four years ago when I was chair was probably one of the hardest ones where there was a large group of protesters. They were very, I mean, they're, they were very aggressive and loud and said, like Tim said, some really mean things about us. And, you know, you go out into the community after something like that, and you wonder, do people really believe that? I mean, that, I think that was a hard thing for me. And I worked my way through it, and the people that know me know that none of that stuff is true. So it, but there are, there's, so there's times, I wouldn't say threatened, never physically threatened, never, not anything like that, but there were moments that were, where you didn't feel comfortable.
And I'll just say, and I'll speak for Dr. Daniels too, I'm in the nutrition situation a couple of years ago. We both received very aggressive threats that were taken seriously by the police and the FBI. We have received personal threats and also threats to family members at times, but those have not necessarily occurred to board members. And I'm glad for our board members. I don't mean that in a negative.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, we're not the only administrators who have been in that boat. This is something that happens.
But I, I mean, I think that the last point on that would be that there's a commitment, there would be a commitment as a group, you know, we all are recognizing that we're all public servants. We don't necessarily have to agree on anything, but we're here for the good of the district, and we're going to, we're going to support each other from that perspective and make sure that we're all safe and functioning to the best of our ability so that we can be effective. And that would be the same for the administration as well.
And I will say, that is one of the unique things of this group. And as you consider a run for board, this is a group that supports each other very effectively and works together very well despite disparate and differing opinions and perspectives. And that is what is a highly functioning board in the state of Minnesota. And so that is the role for us as administrators, we would hope anybody new coming on would figure out how to work well with the team, and there are trainings and supports. And I'd be happy to meet with anybody at any point, and so would the board members.
Well, we have three elementary schools, a middle school, and a high school.
Four.
That's right.
Four elementary.
Yeah. Four elementary schools, a middle school, and a high school. Four.
And a special ed site, a community education site, and an ALC site. So we actually have nine buildings, and then we also have partnerships into others.
So four, one, and one.
Plus three special sites.
And I would also add that the administrative team in this district is a very strong team that is very supportive of the board as well. So I feel like, I don't know that this is like this elsewhere, but I feel like we all really function well as a team and listen to each other and learn from each other and support each other.
All right, so we are at time, but again, we are happy to chat with anyone who has a question, a follow-up question after this meeting and after the, you know, anything that you read from the policy links that we shared, please let us know. And, and I, we, well, I don't like to say we, I hope you consider to serve because it's really great to have a good pool of people who are willing to step up and then let the community choose about the future of this board. So thank you for being here today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for spending your time with us.
Thank you.
And I think our contact information is clearly available on the website, so you should be able to at least find our emails.
Emails and phone numbers.
I got my text, it'll be handled by Friday.
See, Jenny made something happen. Thank you. Yes, thank you, Paula.
Thanks, Paula.
I have to take this off.
Yeah.
Refreshed Prince of Villair, what a disagreement look like.
Yep.
Going to qualify nice people?
Okay, great. All right, folks, I'm going to count down from five, if that's okay, and we'll get rolling. Let me just make sure my computer's up, otherwise I won't know what to say. Here we go. And we'll be going live in five, four, three, two, one. Good evening. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, July 12, 2021. I call to order this regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. Attending this evening's board meeting live in the boardroom are board members Paula Cole, Christine Malik, Allegra Smiesek, Peter Tensing, Crystal Brocki, and I am Board Chair Tim Paulus. Joining us at the table is Superintendent Yuniewski, and we have other members of the district administrative staff in the audience who we may call on throughout the meeting to present. Also joining us at the table is Board Secretary and Assistant to the Superintendent Cassandra Quam. The Richfield Public Schools' mission statement is that we strive to inspire and empower each individual to learn, grow, and excel, and we will all strive to keep that focus at the center of our discussions this evening. Thanks to all of you who are joining us live in the boardroom, it is nice to have people back, and we appreciate when people bear witness to our conducting of the necessary official business of the district. It may not seem exciting to everyone on item-by-item basis, but it is essential that we conduct the business. With that, our first item of business this evening is to approve the agenda before us.
I will move approval of the agenda as presented.
I will second.
We have a motion by Ms. Malik, and we'll stay on that side of the table. A second by Ms. Cole. Any discussion of the agenda as presented? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The chair votes aye, and the agenda is approved. We now move to the next section of the agenda, which is information and proposal, non-action items. This evening, we have an opportunity for public comment. We have no people who signed up to speak to us live in the boardroom, but we did receive one written note of public comment that I will read into the record, if that's okay. It is from Jennifer Allen, who is a parent in the district. "Good afternoon. I would like to express my praise of Dr. Stephen Yuniewski's efforts to make the Richfield Public School District a place of purposeful destination, one of choice. I say this having made the choice five years ago to stay in this district to raise and educate my two children versus moving closer to my aging parents in Ramsey County. Not only have I stood by my decision, I've shared that decision with all who've inquired. No district is without problems. What sticks with me is how quickly the problems are recognized, dealt with, and what was learned from the experience. I see the Richfield Public School District as making boots-on-the-ground strides to becoming an anti-racist school district. I see the change in real time, and it's awesome. Let's continue the forward movement with Dr. Stephen Yuniewski." Thank you. Jennifer Allen. Thank you, Ms. Allen. And with that, gosh, I'm already onto page three. I'm confused, people. There it is. Wrong pile. Excellent. Well, we'll just move right on, I believe, now to the superintendent update, correct?
That is correct. And so, we have three items of business on the superintendent update, and before I call the Spartan Foundation up, I just want to introduce our new Assistant Principal of the high school, Mr. Stephen Flukas, who is here in attendance. Mr. Flukas was at the middle school and agreed to transition with the students up to the high school, and our new middle school administrative team will be starting with us next week. I assume we all also know in the back of the room, we have Principal Stacy Thine Collins and Assistant Principal Carrie Vallan, and so our entire high school team is here with us. And part of their reason for presence is the next item on my agenda, which is the Spartan Foundation. And the Spartan Foundation is one of the great supports of our school district and of our students. Spartan Foundation has been a pillar of this community for many, many years, so I'm not going to give too much data to steal their thunder, but we are talking about nearly a half a million dollars to support students and their futures, and to support student activity partners and academics and athletes within Richfield Public Schools. So with that, I'm going to ask the gentleman from the Spartan Foundation, come on up to the microphone, and they have some exciting things to share with us about some things that they are and will continue to do to support our students. Welcome, gentlemen.
Just breaking protocol if I put this chair here.
That's beautiful.
My name is Blaine Jaeger. My name is Blaine Jaeger. I'm the first-year president of the organization that's been around for 32 years, and this is my friend.
Mike Sandahl, Vice President for God knows how long.
So, these guys are my moral support. You've usually seen Bill Davis here, who was a longtime president, 13 years of this foundation, and they are passing on, trying to pass on all their knowledge to a different crew, a different generation, so to speak, and so I represent the next president. So, but happy to be here today. I promise I will be really short, and I've never been at a board meeting before, but I did come bearing gifts. I do believe it's in your minutes of what the Spartan Foundation has done and accomplished. I'm very glad that Steve Lindgren back there invited me to be part of the board three or four years ago. It started out as a golf tournament and has turned into, as Superintendent Yuniewski mentioned, almost a half, $500,000 almost to the district for different various stuff. So, we are here today, though, however, to present a check that we do annually in the amount of $25,000 to 25 different students at RHS of varying backgrounds, of varying studies that they're going into in different schools that they'll be attending, and so it's, I don't get to hand out $25,000 checks very often, and I don't know who to give it to.
How do we pressure her?
All right.
Allegra, you can handle it, Allegra, please.
All right.
Great. And then also with that, I will leave these, if you're interested, if you were not able to make our breakfast, Shannon Lindberg, I'd like to thank the school for working with us, the counselors at the school. Essentially, we give them the criteria for the scholarships that we have and the donors that give us money. They spend all the time and effort in picking the recipients, and so our job is relatively easy. But Shannon Lindberg at the Athletic Activities Office does a great job of helping us put together programs, so I'm going to leave some of those here. And they're kind of the same. This is the scholarship breakfast that we also hosted in the auditorium, and then this is our golf outing that we have, usually the Monday after Father's Day, every June. And then if you're interested, I'll hand you these.
Yep, thank you.
Golf groceries. Anything you want to add, Mike? That's all I have. Okay, we're good? Any questions?
All right. Thank you for, first of all, thank you. I'm fortunate enough to serve as the board liaison to the Spartan Foundation, and it is a great joy to be part of the organization, and the best part is the scholarship breakfast where we see the recipients. It's pretty amazing. I'll ask if anyone else on the board has questions and comments?
Just say what I say. I believe now every year, as a student from a low-income background, I just wanted to share that the $1,000 means a lot to students. Sometimes we don't have, well, now I have money for books, but because of people like you and your funders, so it just means a lot, so thank you very much.
Thank you, you're welcome. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
Okay.
All right, so in our board, yeah. In our board packet, you will see the names of our 25 scholarship recipients. As they pointed out, they are acknowledged at a breakfast. The main fundraiser is the golf tournament, and since 2016, they have offered 25 scholarships per year, and so they continue to be an incredible asset to our students and incredible tribute to our community. So, thank you, thank you, Blaine, and thank you to the Spartan Foundation. Item number two on the agenda is to have the vision cards and to talk about where we are in terms of baseline data, and just as a reminder, these are not perfect and never will be, but we will continue. And as we were talking in the study session, one of the things that we do is try to meet board expectations, and we try to find ways to creatively respond to what our community and our board are asking for, and so vision cards are one of those. So, as a reminder, vision cards are a way of progress reporting that are well beyond a test score. They are a public accountability system, and it's also a way for us as a district and as a board to focus on the top priorities that we have. They align directly to our strategic plan, so there are five strategy areas in our strategic plan, and each one has its own vision card. I won't read the specific strategy statements, but academics, activities, business and ops, climate and culture, and communication and marketing. And just as a reminder, despite the interruption of COVID, there was a year and a half-plus effort to put this work together as a strategic plan, and then coming together with the measures that come on a vision card. You'll notice that our vision cards for this strategic plan are slightly different than we have had in the past, because we really wanted to be demonstrative of the work that we're doing. So, each will have at least three pages. Number one will be that progress report, our current status with each measure. Page two will end up as a list of the strategies we have implemented, so you won't just see the data, you'll see the work that we are doing. And then it'll be followed by a rubric, which may be one page or even slightly longer, talking about how is the progress and what are we looking at as the specific measures in each of those areas. To get the baseline, we set ourselves at the center of our little temperature gauge. So, the R right there is our measure. So, if you imagine a sliding scale, R is going to be our current measure, level zero, and progress forward would be towards two, progress backwards would be towards negative two. So, where we stand at the moment is the baseline of our current performance. That is not a perfect way of measuring, but that is where we're going to start, and it could evolve over the years as we continue to refine our work with our vision cards. These are not the only measures that we will use to evaluate our progress, but it's just a sampling to help us really have a broad-based perspective on how we're doing. We also try to compare our data amongst groups, so as we think about our racial equity policy and our gender inclusion policy, there are times where there is a gap between students in different demographics, and there are times where it is not, and so we're looking at those, at least currently, as measures to focus on in different areas. We've created a vision for areas that we have not traditionally measured or reported on in the past, so there are right now some that we don't have baseline, so for some, year one would be baseline. And then with COVID, which was unique, we have baseline measures from previous years in some situations, because we might not have had data last year because of some of the interruption. And then there are a few measures where we are already where we want to be as a district, and so we may not move up significantly beyond the zero point, and we have to figure out what that means, or if we want to remain with that as the center of our measure. So, for example, as we talked about, the graduation rate gap, and one of our measures is a gap between white students and students of color, and right now, there is no gap. So, progress isn't something that can be made in the gap, progress can be made, however, in the overall measure and moving things forward, or by different demographic groups. So, without further ado, this is what our vision cards look like, and so you'll see on the, on the top, you'll see the vision and belief statement, you will see our overall rating scale, and then you'll see in red boxes, Spartan Red, one, two, three, four, and five, and the actions below each, and areas we will use to determine how we're doing in that overall measure. I won't read through those specifically, because we have seen these, but I'll just use one as an example, and I'll skip number one, and I will go to number three, for example. We will increase course offerings to expand opportunities for students, and specifically, our measure that we have from our strategic plan is increase course offerings at RHS. There may be other things and things we're trying to do, but that's one of the measures we'll report. As you move beyond the card itself, you'll see the rubric, and the rubric shows over, I believe this one is, a couple of pages, what is the data we are looking at. In the center of that data in yellow is where our current baseline data is that we can measure. So, if you look up on the large screen, you will see ensure the demographics of students who have completed FAFSA, and looking at a gap. Right now, we don't have that data. That's something we will be gathering for the future. We do have a data measure up there about overall FAFSA completion, and so we do have that data. So, as you look, we'll continue to gather data on these cards, and we will continue to present. Card number two works in a similar way, activities, and now instead of five, you'll see three areas specifically with fewer bullets underneath, and similarly to follow, you'll see a rubric that goes with that. Continuing on, business and operations, and here we have more areas and seven areas to target, and again, different numbers of bullets based on the things we're talking about as actions and activities. Similarly, followed by a rubric, on to climate and culture, followed by a rubric, communication and marketing, and the rubric in that area also. So, US board members have actually seen this multiple times over an extended, an extended set of meetings, and so what we are working on is we have complete versions of page one and three for each of those vision cards. We'll continue to work, and in our next report, you'll add a page to the strategies we've implemented for each of those vision cards, the things that we have done to try to achieve those outcomes. It's also important for us to remember that these measures can be updated and adjusted as we note, how are we doing, are these the right measures, and do we want to adjust? And then the last piece, and this is the board conversation today, is when and how to report back, and we don't need a specific answer, but the question we're wondering as we work our way through is annual, annual of all of them, different meetings with different vision cards, how do we do that, or should we use this first year as a learning year? I will present, because what I always tell my leaders is present your suggestion, and we go from there. I suggest we stagger our cards through the first year and have, because they can be very meaty presentations, and go through each of the five cards at different meetings on a calendar, which would allow us to do that overall, and then at the end of the year, we look towards an overall summary, and so that would give us two reports on each card, again, staggered throughout the year, and then one overall report. And if the board is comfortable, we can try that, see how it goes, and if we need to adjust, obviously, we have the ability to do that. So, with that, I will pause and turn things to the boards for questions and comments.
All right. Thank you. Well, we're all here, we can just do our usual free-for-all. Do we want to start on the right or the left?
Oh, let's start in the middle.
I appreciate that, and I will defer and deflect to.
Sorry, I couldn't help myself.
No, I appreciate it.
I like.
Crystal.
I am in support of your proposal for how to look at these the first year, if that makes sense to me. I don't feel like I have a different idea. The two things I was going to share is that I really have enjoyed watching the evolution of these over the last several years and seeing how we have fine-tuned and revised our approach to them visually, but also in terms of their substance, I think is really meaningful. My question is more about what can we do differently and better with this iteration of the vision cards so that they aren't just known to the people who are in this room? Because I think that they are incredibly helpful. I think they are very clarifying in terms of what we're focused on and what our outcomes are, and I don't think people would know how to find them, would know what they are, and I would like to see us use these in more of a public and community-facing way than we have in the past.
And so, I'm just going to agree, and as I said in the study session, our Communications Director, Ms. Valley, is listening.
Hi, Jennifer.
Hi, Jennifer. I appreciate the positive feedback on the cards, not only has our team across all levels given further input, but they have been qualmified and validified, as Ms. Quam and Ms. Valley have really put some impressive professional touches on them, which really will help us as a district, and then we'll figure out how to use those communication skills to, again, get the world seeing large amounts of measures rather than small.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I totally agree with you, Crystal, and just would want to reflect, I mean, I think that the vision cards as presented are, obviously, there's a ton of detail there. There's a lot of information which is really relevant and important from, you know, when we're diving from the level of sort of organizational strategy into those tactics that actually make the strategy come alive, and so I recognize that the importance of all that information. And then, just reflecting on Crystal's point, that as we are working on engaging the community, recognizing that there's going to be all kinds, that people are going to want to engage in this in all kinds of different ways, and that the vast majority of folks that we want to engage really aren't going to want that level of detail, and so, you know, we're going to be communicating, you know, finding that right way to communicate kind of the high-level direction of the organization and progress. So, yeah, obviously, it's just getting the right tool for the right job, and we've got lots of different jobs to accomplish here, and these accomplish very well, the job of communicating with the sort of highly engaged, detailed audience, and we need to look at that audience that is not so detail-oriented.
Yep. Thank you for leaving with your recommendation. It's actually a pet peeve of mine, when people don't do that, so I appreciate you bringing that practice to the board, and I agree with what's been said so far. As a very visual person, whose soul is kind of crushed by spreadsheets, no offense to him, I really, really appreciate the way this information is presented, and I think in, like, some areas, perhaps not public-facing in terms of detail, but the actual cards, I think, are a good amount of information. We could come up with like a snapshot or a one-pager, but for folks who want a little more detail, I think the cards not in spreadsheet form would be great public-facing documents.
Ms. Malik?
Okay, I agree, I pretty much agree with what has been said so far. I think the plan of rolling them out one at a time throughout the year, especially since some things will make more sense to hear about towards the end, like academics and test scores and things like that, so just planning how we introduce that and the timing of it all. I think the, to Crystal's point, maybe utilizing the Our Schools publication would be a great place to have one card in each of the, in each of the publications, since we've, with our past surveys, found that that's a place where people go to get information about how the district is doing. found that that's a place where people go to get information about how the district is doing or what's happening in the district. And I agree, they have really evolved very nicely. I like the three pages, and I really like the page that talks about the processes, like what we're doing to make this happen. Those details, I think, are really, really nice to have there so we can get a good picture of what we're working for.
I'm having a hard time with the vision cards because I like narratives. And even though I do like the data, I think this is really hard to read without context. So yes, we should share them because I do like the, when we see the measures that we're taking, it tells a story of the things that we look for. It gives examples of what success looks like. And so I think it shows the direction and, like, specificity and all of that. Then when I start seeing things, especially when they have the same percentage, like 5% increase and then the 5%, you know, it's just weird. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I, I'm not saying I hate them. They give me a lot of information, but I just don't think that. I just want to make sure that when we are putting them for public consumption that. Is that it, right?
Mm-hmm.
I thought of tuberculosis for a moment, I'm like, wait, wait. So that we think about those things, like, we need to tell that story because this is just not a, that's it.
Completely agreed. As you think about what we're developing for page two, that is hopefully going to add some of that. The narrative around what are all the things that we're doing to try to accomplish these goals? And hopefully, when we package this together, and again, we continue to evolve, hopefully, that package will meet the visual learner, the spreadsheet learner, and the expository learner. And we'll look at those at that time, and we'll see if that works. We'll keep going.
No, I mean, I find, I mean, these are necessary, and I like how they're set up. Like, this is the necessary follow-up to our strategic plan, right? Like, we have a strategic plan, how are we possibly measuring it? And this is, it is difficult to measure, you know, something so broad succinctly. And so I understand, like, when we say 2.5% decrease, we've talked before about is that absolute or relative and what that would mean. We could fill in the communication better. One of our most loyal livestream watchers suggested we post updates to the RHS sign at 70th and Harriet, 70th and Lindo. We'll need to upgrade the signage to be full color and high-def and much larger fonts than this. But otherwise, we'll have more cars into the fence at that roundabout. But no, I mean, I really like it. I appreciate the schedule you offered for the first year. I appreciate that we have a growing list of areas to review and measure and that we didn't just stay, let's just run the last one forward, right? So I, it's a necessary mindset for us to be able to measure ourselves and our progress in new and different ways. And so that is all appreciated by me. Anyone else? Last call?
I'll just say one more thing. Earlier today during our study session, several members spoke about the positive trends of the district over the past several years. And I think this document helps me understand how that happened and the attention to detail and the intentionality of our staff's work. Impressive, so thank you.
All right. Well, next up, I believe, is planning for the 2021-2022 school year.
Yes, and so as we had school year updates repeatedly in the fall, now we are in the planning update phase. And July is typically a downtime, but there's a couple of very specific, important decisions to make in the month of July. And so right now, knowing what we know, and we have learned that we don't ever really know anything anymore because things can change in the land of COVID, we anticipate a relaunch of a, we're going to call it in quotes, typical school year next year, which would mean that most of our students, if not all of our students wanting to, would be able to come in for a full five-day-per-week program in their school with some additional components added through our learnings from the pandemic. It's important to note that when the MDE, the Department of Education, passed the budget, they passed nothing in regard to distance learning. No guidance, no expectation, no law, no rule, no recommendation yet. They have indicated to schools that they're going to give it to us at some point, and at some point has not arrived, which means that there will be no statutory change to the expectations. What that means is that if you were not a pre-approved distance program, meaning if you had not had your own school for online learning, you were not able to now launch a brand-new online school. And so the online five-day-a-week distance programs for districts like Richfield are not one of our options. One of our options would be what is called blended or hybrid programming. And blended means at least one day per week scheduled and planned to be onsite and up to the other four days planned in distance. And so the reality is, we're in the process of deciding as a team whether or not to offer a blended program, whether to offer it at certain grade bands. And then we would also be in the conversation around what that would look like. And so our elementary team and our middle team and our high team are in conversations about what would that look like at your level? What would be the impact? And then we are trying to figure out how to continue to gather additional information. We did a survey. This represents just under 2,000 of our students responded to this survey. And this is the spread of who would want distance, who would want hybrid for the fall. And then on the right is combined. If we assume that everybody responding to the survey wanted distance or hybrid, on the right, which is just under 200 students, is what we received. And then if you look at the elementary level and we think about our average class sizes of 20 to 25, we would be looking at multi-grade bands in elementary if we were to offer that. We would not be looking at a comprehensive program at middle or high. And so we'll talk a little bit about what that might look like as we move forward in the decision-making process. It's also important to know that we have some COVID protocols that we'll be doing regardless of what we are offering for the fall. And we'll be gathering community input based on our summer school, which is in place. And so right now, we have the same home health screenings that we had had in the past. We continue to teach handwashing. We still have escalated cleaning. We are continuing to monitor our air quality and ventilation. Masks, and we are continuing to look at masks and mask requirements. Masks are required on district transportation and for students pre-K8 when indoors. And right now, our middle schoolers are at STEM, and so they're in an elementary building with other elementary kids. It has not seemed to cause significant issues. One of the things we said we would come back to and talk about here. Right now, it seems to be going quite smoothly. Grades 912, we are making masks optional for staff across our district, but staff and students in grade 912 who have been vaccinated. We also still continue with three-foot social distancing and are doing contact tracing when and if we would get any possible COVID infections, which we have been thankful thus far, has not been occurring. The other thing we want to share with the board is transportation and bell time. So as you remember, back at the beginning of COVID, we had to make some pretty significant changes to our bell times and some pretty significant changes to our transportation rules. We are in the process of reviewing possible changes back to the transportation policy. It is likely we'd be bringing that to the board at our next meeting, August 2, which would allow us to finish up transportation routes, which would have us reverting to the walk zones. We had had dangerous walk zones, and with COVID, we were not able to accommodate that amount of transportation. We believe we should be able to move that back. Given the success of our start times, we're looking at a slight adjustment, bringing things a little bit closer together. 7:30 start time at RDLS STEM, which is the same as this year, although we had had them separated as schools. And so I believe STEM was at 7:30 and RDLS was on the second route. But now we can go back to sharing buses again. Centennial and Sheridan Hills in the middle at 8:05, and then Richfield High School and Richfield Middle School at 8:40. And so we had been in a nine, or a 7:30 to 9 window. We're able to shrink that a little bit while still keeping our secondary schools after 8:30. So that is what we are looking at in that area. And then we have been rigorously studying the positives of the pandemic, which is hard to say, but there are some best practices that we learned. We continue to explore and plan for online learning options for specific scenarios. For example, snow days. We found that we may have the capacity to do that online rather than a snow day. A controversial topic, of course. And then sub shortages. There are sub shortages across the entire metro and frankly, across the state. And so one of the ways to get around that is some asynchronous or online learning in situations or in buildings where there isn't a sub. And so one of the success stories was having students go to a larger study area across multiple classes and be able to take their class online or learn in an asynchronous mode while being supervised, which allowed us to not have the same level of pulling staff from their regular jobs to sub for one another. And it was really successful to not interrupt student learning. We are able to, we believe, continue specialist professional learning communities across buildings, something that came with the pandemic as we learned that meetings can happen without being in the same physical space. And we also saw a much larger increase, particularly in times like spring, of virtual conferences. So not saying we will only do virtual conferences, but there was an increase in the opportunity to serve and meet with our community by offering those virtual. Another success story similar of meetings is to offer those. Some where Richfield Patino Family Association is now attended by almost 30 families, where it had not been able to draw quite that level prior to things being online in the pandemic. And then secondary is looking for some improved systems and structures to support student needs, both at the middle and the high. Looking at improved AirPod and advisory. One of the things they found, win time, which is what I need or a specifically differentiated time based on student assessments and the student need built into the regular daily schedule. And so what that might look like at a middle or high would be a four-day traditional week with the traditional seven-period day schedule. And then looking at Wednesdays as shortened class periods, but extra flex time where they're supporting what kids need to accelerate their learning or what kids need to support their work to get caught up. It was one of the great finds of the pandemic, which is a much higher percentage of our students were able to succeed with increased AirPod advisory. Well, this brings us back to the full academic core load that we were able to deliver prior to the pandemic. We had looked at some additional components like block scheduling, and those are things that I would anticipate us examining after this year. But given some of the successes we have had long-term with our seven-period day and our graduation rate and our gap between our students, students of color and white students closing to a level that other districts aren't succeeding in, we want to be very careful not to lose our great wins while adding some of the other components to see if that can really continue to move us forward. So planning process-wise, so what does this look like? Planning team is much like last summer. We will be on the ground late July, early August, beginning to plan for what is it going to look like in September? What will it look like to offer possibilities of blended programming or any of those other components? We will continue to get input from students, families, and staff. And in that late-July time, we'll continue to design the possible blended program and really make those decisions around what will we offer and what can we offer. So with that, I will open things up for questions or comments.
Thank you. I'll look to my left now. Ms. Cole, do you want to start us? Or do you want to pass?
I'll pass, thank you.
All right, Ms. Malik.
I don't have questions, but I just appreciate the detail and all of the work that went into this. I feel like it looks good. You have a plan? I think, I'm just thinking about the students. If we don't do, offer a blended program, and is there still a possibility that they could allow a full distance? Or is that out of the question?
So some of the options we know and we have explored is, we do have an RSEP program, which offers a blended program as it is and is state-approved for grades 9 through 12. We do also have partnership with a technology-based program called Edgenuity, where classes are offered asynchronously and online. And then the challenge as we look at these numbers, and that's really where the challenge of offering the blended program is, is it doesn't become a comprehensive program.
Not enough.
Especially at elementary, for example, where we wouldn't be able to, we'd already be staffing classes much lower than, if we anticipate our numbers are right, and that's what becomes the additional challenge because who might commit to COVID or to distance in May or June might not have the same perspective in September. We're talking about multi-grade bands in an elementary, and we're talking about not much specialist time. We don't believe, we're just not sure we could offer a program that we feel we could put our name behind. And that's what we're really studying as a team, is can we give enough quality if we do this work? We believe we can at secondary, but it would be very different. So that's what we're exploring.
Thanks.
Ms. Mishak?
I think all I'll add is if there's capacity, there could be a lot of opportunities for innovation within the online school. And I think you mentioned some, you know, for secondary, so.
Absolutely. I mean, I'd also say we also work with neighboring districts and partner districts. So I know that I have reached out, for example, to one of the curriculum leaders of Hopkins Public Schools, and I'm waiting on receiving some curricular work from that school leader, which can really help accelerate the work for our team.
Yeah, I would recommend a reminder, perhaps, as the July 15 accreditation application approaches.
Sounds good. Well, I will reach out after July 15.
So I just want to reflect on some strong work. As you guys know, my day job is medicine, so I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about the ongoing pandemic scenario and just wanting to continue to encourage that, you know, recognizing that the, by far and away, the most effective tool for getting us to, normal interactions is vaccination. By far and away, the most effective tool. And so just wanting us to continue to do what we can to support higher vaccination rates across our community. I mean, Richfield's doing reasonably well, but we can always do better. And so I just wanted to kind of make that point.
Yes, I've been very pleased with the work of Mr. Holgy and the vaccine clinics and also Dr. Clarkson and her work in the area of contact tracing and a wide range of testing. And those two folk have really gone double time. We'll continue to do so as we move forward.
Yeah, we have very well-deserved praise for the efforts that have been put forward for managing COVID this year. Very proud of the work of our school district, so thank you.
Ms. Baraki?
Yeah, the main thing that I'm thinking about is the possible blended program and what we see from at least just this initial indication of people in our school community who would be interested in some aspect, some degree of blended program. And I don't envy the tough decisions and the planning that has to go into that that is particularly on the shoulders of the people in this room. And I think the thing that I am trying to think about is the equity policy that we recently passed. And through that lens, what would that actually ask of us as we think about who is affected by the decisions? And I think that was brought up to my mind again today when I read a story about immunocompromised children and their families and what does it mean for them when schools are overwhelmingly going all back to in-person and there isn't a degree of choice in the fall. And I think our equity policy would ask us to really sit with that question. And we don't know, or at least I don't know, the stories of the people who indicated in these surveys that they would be interested. But those are the types of questions that I hope you all are really sitting with and thinking about as we're making these decisions because I think the policy we passed, that is the intention of it, is to really sit with those complexities.
Yes, we do know, in our initial data, we didn't gather some of the demographic data we'd like to have to really make that educated piece. As a board, I would ask you to reflect on your vision around providing that because there's really two components. And I want to separate it out behind, will there be a distance program accessible to our students? And also connected up, will Richfield Public Schools offer that or will it be in collaboration with a partner? So Crystal is one of the, or is the representative to the 287 board, and they have a very robust online program, and they are one of our partners. Typically, we don't like to hand off students even though they're a partner. And so that is one of the questions for you all to think about is how much do we utilize our partnerships? How much would you like us to push our staff to deliver that product? And also, as Crystal points out, what are the questions? Like, what are the stories and demographics of the students looking for distance so that we are following our vision of equity and serving the kids in the best way possible and taking anti-racist reactions?
All right. I have no questions or comments. Everyone's brought up really good, good things to think about. Thank you, Crystal, for grounding us in that perspective because it is critical, right? Just, you know, it would be cold and calculated to say, oh, the numbers line up poorly and just shrug our shoulders. So it's a good reminder for us to be more critical. That brings us to the end, I think. Are you correct of the. That brings us to the end, I think. Is he correct of the superintendent update?
That is correct. And then just summarizing to say, you'll see this one, the fall planning, again before fall, obviously.
Well, that brings us to the end of the information and proposals. And next up is the consent agenda, the collection of routine business items that we consent to pass in bulk with no discussion. If anyone would like to move something for discussion, we can remove it. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented.
I will move the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Brackey, and a second by Ms. Malik. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. The chair votes aye, and the consent agenda is passed. We move now to old business, Policy 613, Religion in the Schools.
Sorry, yes. Sorry.
You don't want to get me started on it.
Yeah, short naps are the best. I'm sorry, spaced out there. Passage, recommending for passage on third read of Policy 613, Religion in the Schools, and accompanying guidelines. Just as a reminder, we saw this through Read 1. There were adjustments to bring things up to speed, and then final adjustments just really around coming up with our brand guidelines and matching those pieces. And so you will see that in here, and pushing this forward, with a hope for passage tonight.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have comments or questions about Policy 613 and Guideline 613.1 as presented? Pretty old hat at this time, okay. If anyone feels like we're in a position where we could move the item, we would entertain that motion.
I'll move the policy as amended.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Tensing, and a second by Ms. Cole. Final call for question or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. The chair votes aye, and Policy 613 and 613.1 are updated as presented. Next up is Policy 614, Animals in Schools and Classrooms, a second read.
A second read. And so this is a great example of why, with our policies and guidelines, we have multiple reads. You see it once, and now you see it with a wide range of additions and changes. Since this policy was in practice before, a significant amount has gone through the School Boards Association, beginning with the acknowledgement that it is important to us, and we are responsible to prevent students who are needing a service animal to have one. Creating those clean definitions of what is a service animal, who handles it, and what are the roles and responsibilities of that animal, and also the trainer, the conditions for its presence, why we have animals, and what are the requirements that make something specifically a service animal that can come to our schools, and what does that look like? So, what we are asking is a significant thorough opportunity for you all to read, because again, you will see a large amount of changes and additions in this policy. And so, reading through those, we can take feedback or input tonight, or also, obviously, over the next few weeks, prior to our August 2 board meeting. And we will look at it again, hopefully for passage at that time.
All right. Any questions or comments on the extensive edits that were provided for Policy 614?
I have one, which is, I know enough to know that I am not an expert in any of this, and that a lot of this certainly is legal and is rooted in the Americans with Disabilities Act. But I'm also wondering if we have already, or if we could potentially take steps to make sure that this is reviewed by folks who are directly affected by this. And so I'm thinking, you know, we're very fortunate to have the Richfield Disability Advocacy Partnership. I know the acronym is ARDAP. I might have gotten one or two of the specific words wrong. You know, is this something that we could potentially ask them to take a look at, and make sure that we are aligned, not just legally, but I think also in practice? And yes, Judy Mo would be a great person.
Thank you. How is Judy, Judy Raven?
Yes. So that was my thought, because I was looking at this.
Judy Mo, so I have her email contact. We can email Judy Mo and ARDAP, and we can share that with them and do that before we bring it back for recommended passage. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? That's an excellent idea. I mean, just, right, this, again, a good reminder again from Ms. Brackey, for us to be thoughtful, and that, right, the cold, calculated adoption of language from the MSBA policy. Auto policy is a good first step, but let's make sure it matches what happens in the real world and is appreciated. Any other questions or comments? All right, second read. As always, if you have thoughts or ideas after the board meeting, you can always share them directly with the superintendent. All right. We will move forward then to Policy 616, School Sponsored Student Publications.
All right. And so we are also on the second read of this policy. And so you'll just note that there are just minor revisions to this policy. And so you'll see just some very small language changes that don't make a substantial difference. And just as a reminder of our process, we compare previous or current policy with MSBA-updated policy, and there are experts in policy at MSBA that kind of walk through any statutory changes and look at those. And then we review them through our leadership and our leadership work. So this is here for you tonight, and you will probably not see significant changes at our third and final recommended read.
All right. Very subtle changes recommended for Policy 616. Does anyone have any substantive comments or other things to offer? All right, then we'll bring it back next time. And on the third read, it should be right for passage. Cool. All right. Next on the agenda is the school board meeting schedule for 2021 and 22.
All right. So we have looked through this a couple of times. I have just gotten that there is another one to make, but I'm going to suggest that change as we go forward. So just as a reminder, our typical meetings are on the first and third of the month, with public comment on the second meeting. We do invite, and we'll have our schools stop and present in the first meetings. And then we add study sessions as they go. We have gathered input from a wide range of folk in this area. They did just set the final date for the Richfield Spartan Foundation Golf Tournament, as I believe, Monday, June 20th. And so we'll move that meeting, or if you would take a friendly change to the calendar to move that to Monday, June 27, that would be, that would be the only addition, and I believe I'm correct?
Actually, I think when I looked at it, Monday, June 6 is, what, like the third to last day of school, correct?
Yes.
I mean, historically, I think we've waited until after graduation, just because the team is collectively trying to land the airplane, right, smoothly without bumps, and to prepare for a meeting on that last week is, you know, I don't, like, historically, we've waited, I think, until, have we not?
I don't remember that, but I-
No, we've had meetings before, like that final week? Okay.
We have June 10 as a federal holiday now, and we have a meeting scheduled for June 20th. And I have no idea what's going to happen, this is very recent. But if it were to become a holiday that Monday and observe, my-
So the 20th should definitely move, is the consensus, and that makes sense?
I think it should, yes.
For, for your reasons first.
That works. If we only have one July meeting, then that's still two weeks.
All right. So we'll move that to June 27, which also gives us those two June board meetings in case.
Super. All right. So with that, that minor revision to the proposed schedule, the only change, again, from what we were presented with, is to move the Monday, June 20th to Monday, June 27. Any other discussion, or we can entertain a motion?
I will move the school board meeting dates as presented, with the amendment of the Monday, June 20th meeting moving to Monday, June 27.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Brackey, and a second by Ms. Malik. Final call for discussion? All right. We'll move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. The chair votes aye, and the schedule is passed with that slight amendment. Excellent. New business. New business. Where have you been? Adult education.
All right. So we are bringing, and in our goal to try to keep things moving and keep us up to date, bringing the adult education policy forward, one that has not been worked at for a bit. And it just reminds us about the things that we do in adult education, the areas that we serve, ECFE, Adult Basic Ed, General Enrichment Courses, and then we also have some of those other additional options. And so this is here for us, in front of us, and you will see us updated as we go along, a short one pager.
I could get used to policies of this length. So, as a first read, again, everyone, please give it a thorough read. If you have questions or comments or edits, please share them with the administration, and we'll bring it back for the August meeting, and with some markups if necessary. All right. Next item is a collection of items. We'll hear about them one by one, and, or perhaps in a group, rather, and then pass them one by one, a collection of change orders related to the various construction projects going on in the district. Mr. Holgy is here to join us. Hold on. This is important. Chief Human Resource and Administrative Officer Craig Holgy is here to join us.
Very good. Thank you. The first three items are a part of our construction project. The fourth item here, that's a change order for the pavement rehabilitation project, is actually an LTFM change order. So I'll do the first three as construction project. I'll include that pavement rehabilitation, and you can go back and vote on each one of those. The first item is Sheridan Hills Facilities Project Change Order Number Three for a total of $2,280. This has, relates to demolition of steel platforms in the boiler room, and the addition of some steel handrails and exterior stairs. That brings that project to $9,968,428. For the Richfield Middle School Facilities Project, we have change orders 19 and 20, for a total of $32,780.20. Change order 19 for $17,302.77 is adding a door and ship's ladder in the boiler room, which is required by code, as well as the removal of some dishwasher shelving and cabinets that were originally planned to remain. And then change order 20 for $15,477.43 is some various plumbing and mechanicals associated with drain lines and pumps, for a new air handling unit, and then a hose bib and wall finish work. That project is now at $17,421,817.73. And then Central Facilities Project Change Order Number Four for a total of $6,637.17. Replace some of the existing sink and casework in the kitchen prep area, and some disconnection of the power to the existing furniture, as well as adding a sprinkler head. That project is now at $347,022.47. We do continue to monitor the contingencies in which each one of these projects individually, as well as collectively, and all of these have been accounted for, and they're aligned with our assumptions that way. And then finally, we have Pavement Rehabilitation Project Change Order Number Two, the big parking lot project we see in the front of the building moving forward. This has a total of $13,026, bringing some of the items back into ADA compliance issues with the existing sidewalk to the high school, as well as additional structural replacements and adjustments. We did do a deduct for alternate one to provide some of the cost recovery associated with that long-term facilities maintenance project. That project is now at $582,947. If there are any questions on any of those items, I can respond to those. Otherwise, we ask for your approval.
Can I just clarify the pavement rehab project? That's part of the, like, long-term facilities maintenance, whereas the other, the prior building ones are more related to the-
The bond and-
Thank you.
The larger project that's going over District Y.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions or comments from Mr. Holgy on the various change orders we've just heard about? All right. Well, with that, we will first take the Sheridan Hills Change Order Number 23.
I will move Sheridan Hills Facilities Change Order Number 23 for approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Brackey, and a second by Ms. Smiesek. Final discussion on the change order? All right, we'll vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. The chair votes aye. And Change Order 23 for Sheridan Hills Elementary is approved. Next up is the RMS Change Orders Number 19 and 20.
I'll move approval of the RMS Change Orders Number 19 and 20.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Malik, and a second by Ms. Cole for RMS Change Orders Number 19 and 20. Any final discussion on those? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Chair votes aye, and Change Orders 19 and 20 for RMS are approved. Central Change Order Number Four.
I'll move approval of Central Change Order Number Four.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Tensing, and a second by Ms. Smiesek. Any final discussion on that one? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Chair votes aye, and Central Change Order Number Four is approved. Next up, we have the Pavement Rehab Project Change Order Number Two.
I move pavement rehab change order number two for approval.
I will second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cole, and a second by Mr. Tensing. Any final discussion of the Pavement Rehab Project Change Order Number Two? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Chair votes aye, and Change Order Number Two is approved. I think we're done with those, right? Oh, wow. And Mr. Holgy's still up. This is wonderful.
Still up.
His usual filibuster. We now are moving to the solar array installation agreement with Ideal Energies.
Very good. Thank you very much. Earlier this evening, we were talking about the strategic plan. And one of the goals in the strategic plan is to ensure environmentally-friendly practices within the district. We currently have a number of solar arrays that are on our middle school, high school, and STEM building. And this proposal seeks to increase the level and the amount of that solar array, which we anticipate will recover about, or provide about 20% to 25% of our electrical needs through this solar array installation, increasing it from less than 5%. So, earlier this year, Chris and Ideal Energies brought forth a proposal to capitalize on a couple of resources and a couple of grants that are available to it. In addition to that environmentally-friendly approach, we are also anticipating saving about $45,000 annually, beginning in the first year, after we look at the total cost of ownership of the project, with incremental net increases through year 20, and then rise to approximately $235,000 annually after the equipment has been provided. Total savings are projected to be $1,246,000 in the first 20 years, and then $7,467,000 cumulative after 40 years, based on projected utilization, projected costs. As I indicated earlier, as part of the project, the district installation benefits from the participation in the solar rewards and PV demand credit programs to partially support this funding. We have partnered with Ideal Energies to split those grant applications, and have received approval for those already. We also had a request, and they presented this information to Fiscal Planning and Advisory Committee, and they had asked that we do a competitive analysis to make sure that the pricing on this was appropriate. So we did also seek a similar proposal from a provider that has done installations and approved for installations in a couple other school districts, and did some reference checks for both Ideal Energies as well as that other provider. And based on all of that, we are recommending the approval of the authorization to enter into an agreement with Ideal Energies, based on the financial considerations, as well as experience in educational programming. So at this point, it's authorized me to enter into that agreement, once it's all finalized. We are currently partnering with Jay Squires from Rupp Anderson Squires in Walzburger to put together all of those agreements. He has worked with Ideal Energies and other school districts, and so we anticipate that will be a fairly quick process, but we'll make sure all of the items are in line before we do that. And then finally, there are some final engineering things and things like that that need to take place. So with that, there's a presentation that's included in the board packet. I invite Brayden and/or Chris to come up and share that information, and answer any questions you have about their work.
Hello.
Good evening. My name is Brayden Solomon. I'm the Vice President of Business Development at Ideal Energies. As you know, we are a commercial solar developer based here in Minneapolis, actually just right up the road at 58th and Nicollet. Yeah, we've been around since 2010, and we kind of based our company around these incentive programs for commercial solar when they first came out through Xcel Energy. And since then, I think we can go to the next slide, which tells our story a little bit. Since then, we've completed over 400, I think, close to 425 systems, I believe, across commercial buildings in the metro area. So, we do a lot of work in Xcel Energy territory, and about half our business is done with public entities. So we've done a lot of, I think we've done about 14 cities and counties. You'll see the list of our school customers here shortly. That's, there it is. I think it's 32 school districts, charter schools, and private schools. And we have actually done over 100 school buildings with rooftop solar in the state to date, and you guys will notice that your name is on that customer list. So we actually did some projects for your districts.
You were our first.
Yeah, I think it was the first school that we did, yeah. We actually developed this program for this district, and we've now kind of extrapolated across many, many districts. But it was originally designed for you, which is kind of funny.
We get the residuals on that, correct?
Yeah. The licensing.
He's here with the check. It's like the foundation check.
So, yeah, we are proposing some solar arrays, utilizing some different incentive programs. We can go to the next slide here. So quickly, just describing how this works. So, we install solar arrays on the rooftops of your buildings. Those create DC electricity that flows down- Those create DC electricity that flows down into an inverter that creates AC electricity that your, your building then can consume. It goes directly into your building's switchgear, so every kilowatt hour that your solar array produces is a kilowatt hour you're no longer buying from XL Energy. They also install a new utility meter that can spin both ways, so at any point, if your solar array is producing more than you're consuming, like on a Sunday or something like that, when people aren't around, that energy gets sent back to the grid and you get credited for that energy. So for the larger systems, they look over a year to see if you've sent more back than you've consumed. Smaller systems, they do it over a month. So the next slide here. So we're proposing solar arrays that are utilizing two different incentive programs. So the first is solar awards. That is a legislatively created program that is funded by the legislature in the state of Minnesota for smaller scale commercial solar arrays. So this is very similar to what's already on your rooftops, and these arrays get a, an incentive that's paid out for how much energy they produce over 10 years. We use that to help pay for the upfront cost of the array, leaving the district with less to pay for in terms of energy payments, and that's how we get these paid for. So the smaller arrays have a 15-year term, and we're also utilizing a program that's a sub-program of solar awards that is specifically for schools that have a majority of free and reduced lunches, so they created an additional upfront incentive that helps pay those off again quicker, so there's less for the district to pay for. So those we do on a 15-year term, and I'll explain what that means in a minute here. And then secondly, we're going to use a program called the PV Demand Credit Rider, and this is a relatively new program through XL Energy that's opened the door for larger scale solar installations on rooftops. So historically, we would only do these 40 kilowatts smaller postage stamps on rooftops, and now we've reached a point where we can do larger systems, and the reason for that is, is that XL Energy views you taking your load off of the grid as a financial benefit to them. So they pass that financial benefit back on to their customers in the form of an additional bill credit on top of your energy savings. So that, again, has kind of opened the door for these larger installations, and we've been doing quite a few of these across many different districts the last couple of years. Those ones are set up on a 20-year term. The next slide here is, so we're also proposing for your three existing systems that you have on your rooftop, they were under the first incentive program in the state that required made-in-Minnesota solar technology. The panels that are on the rooftop right now are kind of an unconventional solar technology, and that company has gone out of business. So what we're proposing is just replacing the panels on the rooftop with modern conventional products that can be replaced by anything from any manufacturer, so it's just ease of operations and maintenance for the lifetime of the solar array. So we'd use the existing circuits, all the existing wiring, we just put new panels on the rooftop. And so I believe there are three of those. And what we'll do for those is, it'll be identical to the solar award systems, just existing remaining financial obligations will just get rolled into another 15-year contract. So the next slide here, so these are the proposed arrays on the rooftops, so you'll note that some rooftops on the school buildings aren't being used, and that's because we worked with the district's roofing contractor, Tremco, as well as working with the district to identify roofs that are feasible for solar, that are younger roofs and things like that that require less maintenance. So high school, we have a replacement array and a large array. The next school is the Richfield STEM, again, replacement array. You can see that I just put panels on top of the existing system, so that's the replacement. The rest of that is the new array, and again, we utilize the roofs that are new. So next slide here, dual language, this is all a very new roof, so we just proposed one large system on it. Next one is the middle school. This has a replacement array plus a, a larger scale array, but again, you can see that it's using only the roofs that are new. This is Centennial Elementary, so this actually qualified for that low-income program, so solar awards with the low-income upfront incentive. So that's a 58.63 kilowatt system. And the next school is Sheridan Elementary, which is, again, a low-income program through the solar awards program. So the next slide, I believe, goes into how this works. So under our solar program, again, it was originally designed for your district. The district owns the solar arrays day one, so you are fee title owner to the solar array, and we have a lease set up where essentially you agree to buy the power from that solar array for a period of time. And so you, so the way it works is for 15 years, you buy power for the smaller arrays, and 20 years for the larger arrays, and the way we set that up so you save money day one is to have it be a 30% discount on the value of the energy that you're saving is what you pay. So if you save $10, you would pay seven, as an example. And then that goes for the term, then following that term, the agreement ends, and all energy that comes from that solar array for the remaining life of the solar array, which is approximately 40 years, is free. That goes to the district, so you kind of see a huge return after the end of the energy payments. Under this agreement, we are obligated to operate and maintain the arrays for the district, so it is an extremely hands-off project from the district's point of view. I like to tell people that just, all we need is access to the building, and then from there, you're, you're kind of hands-off. And the panels, the system itself carries a 25-year production-based warranty. I also want to point out that we're getting exact numbers on this, we're waiting on some numbers from XL Energy, but I can approximate that we're going to offset about 22% of the district's energy consumption, and we'll have updated numbers, we're still waiting on XL to send us your most recent energy consumption data. So the next slide is, so this is some cash flow documents, so what we do is we do an example of a smaller system, then we total those, then we do an example of a larger system, and we total them. So the way these transactions work, they're very simple. You have utility bill savings, in this case, you can see that it's $5,321. Since you own the solar array, and we're leasing it back, we, you're leasing it back to us, we pay you rent, that's $50 a year, so your income is total. Then you have your expenses, so you have your energy payment, which is equal to 70% of your total savings, so it's a 30% discount, and then you have a requirement to insure the array through, XL Energy requires that you insure it. What we found, though, is that we have $180 built on in this one, but we found that most school districts nowadays don't actually have an additional cost to insure the arrays, like I think we did 20-something systems for Eden Prairie Schools, and they had no additional cost to insure them. They just kind of view it as a glorified HVAC unit on your rooftop. So you save about $1,500 a year with the smaller ones, so then the next slide, we total that up. So we have the two solar awards low-income projects, and then the three replacements. And here, I'll just, I can't read, I've got good eyesight, but I'm not that good looking at the screens up there. You save, in the first year with the smaller arrays, about $5,700. That goes on, it rises over time as utility rates increase, and then you can see at year 15, you've saved about $107,000, but the second that those energy payments terminate, and you start collecting all of that energy moving forward, your savings jump from $8,700 a year to $32,000. And then that keeps going until, it keeps compounding over time as utility rates go up, saving you over about 40 years, 1.2 million for the smaller arrays. So the next piece here is the large arrays. They work exactly the same way, except it's a 20-year agreement, and the numbers are just a little bigger. So this is the high school. So you've got your utility bill savings, $63,593. You have some rent revenue, it's just a little higher for the bigger systems, $250, so we total your income, $63,800. You make that energy payment, that's set to be a 30% discount. Then you have the insurance expense, which, again, you might not have, but we have it in there anyways, and we take your revenue minus your expenses, and you save $18,428 with the larger arrays in the first year. And then, so that's one, and now I see you've gone to the next slide, but this is just combining them all. So the larger arrays, the numbers are bigger, energy savings are larger, but they work in the same way as the one I showed you before. So these, you save close to $40,000 in the first year, and then looking at year 20, you can see where the energy payments terminate, and then you collect all those energy savings for the remaining life of the system. So that's where you really see, if there was a graph, you'd see your savings just jump from there, and that's why the savings number over the total life of these are so So that's 6.2 million roughly over the lifetime of the arrays. The next piece here, the next piece here is something that we worked really hard to develop. We wanted to have an additional piece that we can deliver to schools to be able to utilize the solar arrays that they have on their buildings as an educational tool for students. So we developed, we worked with professional curriculum developers to develop a STEM program, essentially. It's a problem-based learning module, and currently we have a, an approved fifth-grade curriculum, and we are developing a high school curriculum as we speak. And it's, it's a, it's kind of cool the way it's designed, where kids get to essentially assume the role of a developer and look at a building and kind of design it, look at how the sun hits it, design around the rooftop things, and then get to put a project together from start to finish, and there's all the different roles involved, it's, I really like it. But it is aligned to Minnesota State Standards, Next Generation Science Standards, and 21st Century Learning Frameworks. And again, it's, it's kind of a module, so a lot of schools will use it in different ways, some might use pieces, some might take the whole thing, but that's provided to the district. Another piece here, which is not in here that I wanted to mention, is the monitoring platform that we install on every single one of the solar arrays on the rooftops. So it's just a, essentially a public URL that you have access to, where you can watch your solar arrays produce energy live, and it also has a bunch of like energy savings facts on the side, and people really like to use those in the classrooms. You can actually see a cloud come over and see the energy dip, which is really cool. So then the next steps for this program, what's that?
Moving through mostly.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah. So we've already applied for grant funding, that is all secured. We are currently working on the contract negotiation, and then we're just going to dive right into construction. And so that is our total presentation there. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you. It was very interesting. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
So just a comment, I was able to participate in the meeting of Chris and his partner when they presented to Fiscal Planning, and it was well-received by that group. The piece that made the biggest, I think, impact on the group was operated and maintained by Ideal Energies, and so we have the experts-
People like that.
Yeah, we have the experts up there taking care of that technology for us, so just to reflect on that from our Fiscal Planning Committee.
Thank you for sharing that, Pete. Any other questions or comments from folks?
Like, this is another area where I don't know a lot, but I feel like I learned some things in this, so thank you for that, and it makes me really excited, just, you know, as Craig, you said in your intro, this is a priority of ours. I, I think it's also part of Richfield as a community, you know, a broader party, and I saw your partners with the city as well, and so I just am excited. I feel like I don't even know what questions to ask, but I'm very hopeful about everything that you shared and what I've learned tonight.
Yeah, I think it's really exciting, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness behind the education piece, that would be a really missed opportunity-
Absolutely.
-to not have that, so thank you, and-
We need to rely on people like you to help advance a curriculum like that, make sure that there's interest in the school district, and we're like full speed ahead. We're always, you know, trying to find people that have as much energy behind it as we do. So if you bring it out, we'll match it, kind of.
Awesome, it's great to hear.
Ms. Malik, Ms. Cole?
No questions, just thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great presentation, nice detail.
I, I actually had a couple of questions. The, noticing like that the younger roofs get, have, of course, the younger roof has, it's not going to be replaced soon, so you can put more on it. What are the challenges if, like, what's the lifespan relationship between the roof that's under it and the panels on top of it, and how do we manage that?
So what we do is we work, when we do solar arrays, we take roofs that are essentially new, or have at least 20 years of life in them. And then, at some point in time, because the solar arrays last so long, you have to take them down and put them up when you put a new roof in. That takes approximately one year of savings to do that. The thing that's unique about our program is that they have an end. So usually, solar projects, if you do a project, and somebody says to you, "Yeah, we'll do the project, but I'm going to own it, not you, and you're going to have to pay me for 25 years, and then when that's done, you're going to have to buy it from me again." So our transactions are set up where you own it day one, so you never need to buy it from us, and you get it after a period of time when the transaction stops. So when you're done paying for us, one year of savings would take down the solar array and put it back up, and you'll be able to capitalize on 20 more years of savings. So when Brayden's talking about those big numbers after it's paid for, that's how you deal with that issue when it happens. But we strategically kind of add solar as roofs are replaced, is kind of how we go about it with districts.
Okay, so that is-
We do it one step at a time and strategically to make sure we're hitting the right roofs only.
All right, so yeah, that was my, my next question, is the opportunity to expand or add.
Absolutely, we do it all the time.
What jumped out to me, right, is RMS and STEM are the same building, and they had very different footprints for, but it's based on the roof age, and so as we replace, say, the roof, I forget which one had fewer, I think it was STEM, we, it's a big roof, and I think we can get more on it, so, okay, that's good to know, thank you.
When we, when we do the engineering, what we do is we evaluate the sites and the roofs, and if there's changes in size and they go up or down a little bit, we kind of work through that, and then finalize things and just with adjustments as we go forward.
Great.
To be able to capitalize on newer roofs, or if there's things that shouldn't be located, we take them off, that's kind of the way we go through.
And as you, as you do roofing projects in the future, we just come back, you replace a roof, and we just add a little more.
Okay, that's great, well, thank you.
Cool.
I, I don't have any more questions, is anyone else? All right, well, this is something we're, we're being asked to approve, isn't it? It is, all right, well-
Thank you for your patience, and being at the end of the meeting agenda, points for that.
We're used to that, actually.
Mr. Chair, I will move that we approve the solar panel installation as proposed by Ideal Energies.
I will second.
We have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Brackey. Any final discussion on the item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. The chair votes aye, and the motion carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm looking very forward to surveys of you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excited to work with you two.
Yeah.
All right. The last item of new business is donations.
All right, so we are recommending to the board to accept the following donations with gratitude. Richfield High School Career and Technical Ed Department received donation of power tools through donorschoose.org. These tools are funded by donations from Jennifer Cotsmith Kraus, Kathy Thiessen, Teresa Youngblum, and Handa Cares, so thank you to our donors. Richfield High School received a donation of $5,828.50 from the Spartan Foundation for weight room turf, so thank you for the Spartan Foundation. The RPS General Fund received donations of $25 from Michelle Burnside of Richfield, and $10 from Lisa Ferrara of Freehold, New Jersey, thank you. And a special donation to the High School, Richfield High School Scholarship Fund was received in the amount of $25,000 from the Richfield Spartan Foundation. This amount funds 1,000 scholarships for the following 25 Richfield High School graduates. I won't read each of their names, they were celebrated at a breakfast and at a golf tournament, and we congratulate our students and are very thankful for the ongoing support of the Richfield Spartan Foundation.
All right. Well, with that, we will entertain a motion to accept the donations with gratitude.
I move that we accept the donations with gratitude. I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Smieszek and a second by Ms. Cole, any final discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. The chair votes aye, and the donations are accepted with gratitude. Thank you to everyone's generosity on that list. Advanced planning, we'll move into advanced planning. Let's see, starts with legislative update. Pete?
Right. I've lost track of all what may or may not have happened since we last had an opportunity to touch into this, but I think that it would be news to say that the legislature did approve K-12 education budget, and that, that budget did include, I believe, a two, about a two and a half percent increase on the general aid formula in year one and a 2% increase in year two. There was also an extension of BPK funding. And I'm, what am I, oh, then there was a relatively small reduction in the special ed cross subsidy. Oh, then there was a relatively small reduction in the special ed cross-subsidy. I'm not sure that that's going to have a huge impact on us, but I think, I mean, I think all in all, it was a reasonable, fairly reasonable outcome. I mean, I think it reflects on, number one, that the economic effects of the pandemic on the state budget fortunately have been buffered. And so I'm optimistic, I think, for, you know, for our next couple of years that we've come through with less of a hit than we would have feared.
I think a year ago, we feared some pretty dire...
Yeah.
...news out of this. So this is a tremendous, tremendously positive turn.
Perspectives are always unique, right? If you were to tell us we were going to get 2.4%, 5% and 2% and cross-subsidy money and BPK and, 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 and then there wouldn't be an abundance of unfunded mandates, we would have been cheering. And so, you know, as I think about state budgets as they've gone on, I'm very pleased within a pandemic how this played out.
I have to agree with that. So any other questions or comments within the legislative update section? All right, we'll move now to information and questions from the board. Does anyone have anything they're looking to share? I'll start with Ms. Cole.
I have nothing to share.
All right. Ms. Malik?
I have nothing either.
Ms. Smyszek?
I have a couple things. When possible, I would love to get an update on the district's land acknowledgement. I'd also love for us to look into the legalities of MSBA about providing a stipend or some sort of payment for our student board reps in the future. And I'd also like the board to consider a study session at some point to really dig into our processes and how we engage with our community and look at some data around that.
Can you say a little bit more?
So, for example, I know that the school district has built a lot of communication systems and family groups and things of that nature across many demographics in our community. But, for example, I very rarely hear from any Latino families, like, that contact me directly or make public comment, and they make up such a large portion of our district. So I know, like, our district has the Latino Family Association, but I don't have that direct communication. And so that's one thing that I've been thinking about, like, what... How accessible are we as board members to our public, and what changes could we consider?
Thank you. That's a great list. Thank you. Have you been sitting on that long?
I have.
That's all right. I'm glad that you shared. Thank you. Mr. Tensing? Do you have questions or comments?
I do not. I'm going to... I don't want to step on those fabulous things from Allegra.
Right. This is my chance to jump on and say, I have the same ideas, but we know better than that. Ms. Baraki?
This is probably jumping to suggested future agenda items, but I'll just say it now. I'm just going to... I'm going to just keep reminding until it happens, the conversation about the federal funding.
Yes.
And our plans, community engagement, just a good public rigorous conversation about that.
Yep, and we have drafted some work in that area, and absolutely are looking to things in the fall, and we'll certainly have that presentation before we hit the fall and kids being back.
All right. Well, I have nothing to share, other than Allegra's list, and Crystal's nice idea as well. Future meeting dates, August 2nd, 7:00 p.m., right here in the boardroom. And August, also August 16th, 7:00 p.m., right here, and that will be our next opportunity for public comment. We've already heard one suggested future agenda item. Are there others? Glancing around? Okay.
I have one for the future, and hopefully not very far away in the future. We've heard a lot in the last month and a half, at least the last month of school, a need that high school students have to have welcoming spaces and teachers that they feel like they can go and talk to. And I would like to... I would like us to study that as a way of thinking about any potential improvements that could be made to create a really safe environment. And something that doesn't feel safe to us on paper when we don't see it, but something that we can really capture, what is it that the students feel safe, and also for staff members to feel safe to do little things, so that's...
Just to make sure I understand, so I restate, so we're looking at probably the high school team specifically, looking at how are we creating safe spaces for our students' ability through the work that they're doing so that students can feel safe and have adults caring for them in our space? And what are the things that we do? How can we examine that? And are there other areas and things that we can do to continue to improve in those areas?
And really about safety, because I know we do a lot of safety things already about identity, but something I'm really thinking about is celebrating diverse cultures, ensuring our staff, you know, is incorporating that, celebrating that, and where kids can be celebrated for being who they are, and where they can feel really welcome. And it's like matching the expectation with the action, because it may be that, you know, I know very caring teachers here, obviously, but just to make sure that we have that conversation with students as to what is it that to them, safety feels like and looks like, and then hopefully we can incorporate some of that.
Sure.
And if I could... You said high school, and yes, I think high school is one of the places where it can be clearest, but I think it is as important, it just looks different at other grade levels. Yes.
Yes, sure.
Right.
We could certainly have a larger conversation about all the things we're doing to create a safe and supportive environment across K-12, and our team does a large amount of work. We'd be happy to talk about that and also look at areas where we can continue to improve.
Right, we just suspect, right, the older students would have the words and the language to tell us what it would be like. Yeah. Oh, that's super. Anyone else, last call? All right. Well, the next item is a closed session as allowed by Minnesota Statute 13D.05 for the purpose of evaluating an employee, in this case, the superintendent.
We'll entertain a motion to move into closed session.
I will move that we enter closed session as allowed by Minnesota Statute 13D.05.
Second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Cole. We have a motion by Mr. Tensing, second by Ms. Cole. Any final discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. The chair votes aye, and after a brief recess, we will move into closed session. For those watching on the live stream, it is 8:38, and we will return from closed session and adjourn the meeting. There is no more action items or further discussion that the board will have. So if you are watching on the live stream with bated breath, this is the logical end of the important part that you would care about. Thank you very much for your patience and your viewing. Take care.
Board members, Jennifer Valley would like me to take a quick photo of you since you're all in the same room, if that's okay.
Did she hear?